Okay, good morning. Today is Monday, August eighth. Are we on Monday, August 8th, 2022? The time is nine oh eight a.m. We're getting a little bit of a late start. My apologies. I'm going to call this regular term meeting of the B County Commissioners' Court to order. We are physically located at the B County Courthouse Commissioners' Courtroom, number one ten, one oh five West Corpus Christi Street, Beville, Texas, seven eight one oh two. That was the call to order. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Two. Prayer. Would everybody please rise? And we have Pastor Maggie Mossler here this morning. Please join Pastor Mossler in a brief prayer.
Almighty God, we put you in charge of our deliberations today. Guide us in the decisions that make your will be done here other than having. In these days when we freely judge and condemn each other, remind us all of the great judgments that we may all face someday. Remind us that only your comments of "Well done, my good and faithful servant" will afford peace and everlasting happiness. Help us to bring about a beloved, safe, healthy community here in this corner of the world. Show us how the role models, how to be role models others might aspire to be. Hold us in your gracious and keep us kind. Amen.
Thank you, Mary. Join me in blessed belief. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. In Texas flag, on the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible. Getting closer. Thank you. I'm doing a little bit better. Thank you. Hey, that's nothing else. Uh, moving on, Agenda Item Number Four, recognition of visitors. Do we have any visitors in the audience? Steve.
Tino, Oliver Vares.
Mr. Oliver Vares, good to see you again. Thank you for being here. Um, moving on to Agenda Item Number Five, Commissioners' Court Opening Remarks. Is Commissioner Lenny Gober? I was done. You have the floor, sir.
Awesome, thank you. Um, not a whole lot. We, uh, we had to clean up the San Pedro Cemetery and, um, kind of disappointing, but we got it done. We had five people, including myself, show up to clean that cemetery, which took about six hours. But we got it done. Uh, and then, uh, thanks to Lacabana, the restaurant here in Taylor, they provided breakfast tacos for everyone that showed up. Um, other than that, working on a, uh, a resolution with the city for the food truck people. Uh, so we, we can get the, the city and the county to work even closer together instead of a, a split, if you will. And I believe that they should have their portion drawn up the next city council meeting, and then the next Commissioners' Court. I'll bring you to the court and we'll get a resolution done. So that'll be a good deal for the food trucks and for the people that go by from the food trucks. That's it.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner. A couple of small things. I had the honor, my wife and I had the honor of attending the, uh, the four H awards on the August fourth at the Coliseum. It was excellent. The, uh, program was fantastic. The, the theme was four H in paradise. They had flamingos everywhere and palm trees, and they had it really decked out. It was, it was great. The, uh, the young men and young ladies, I've attended these in the past, and, and I'm always impressed. Those are our future leaders. They are the future, and, and to see what they go through and to see where they start when they first get into the program, and through all the leadership training and the, the programs they have to give, and to see where they are when they graduate, it's, it's an amazing transformation. It is fantastic. I encourage everyone to, to pat those folks on the back, uh, to appreciate their mother and dads for the time that they put into it, for the time the kiddos have put into it. A lot of them go on to, uh, uh, college, to A and M and other colleges, and it's so encouraging to see this. It's, it's so much respect and dignity. It's, it's fabulous. I don't know how else to catch it. And we had the pleasure of being here. Uh, tree limbs. Got a, uh, email over the weekend complaining that we weren't resurfacing roadway in an area of B County. And the problem is the tree limbs on the road. To resurface the roadway, the county dump trucks have to raise the bed to dump the material. The tree limbs are such that you can't raise the bed. Well, Rodden Bridge had it scheduled some time ago, and the local residents stopped and said, "No, you're, you're not going to trim these limbs." So we're kind of between an impasse. If you really want us to resurface that road, you're going to have to let us trim the limbs. So it's that simple. Uh, had another contact. You may or may not have noticed it, but the torch is missing on Lady Liberty on top of the courthouse. The torch is missing. It's gone. Uh, it has disappeared. I don't know. It's probably in storage. It probably came loose during the lightning storm or whatever. But what I did not know is there is a $10,000 endowment to maintain the, uh, statute. So the person that called me is checking with the endowment committee to see if that money can be used to have a conservator come look and see if we can put the torch back on. I, I hesitate to think it can be done for $10,000 because I was here when they put the Lady Liberty back on top of the courthouse. It was not an easy thing. Huge cranes were involved, so I think there was some donated materials, but that's in the works, Judge. I did not know there was an endowment for Lady Liberty. And the other thing, had a call about, uh, some, let's call it, uh, conditions on a farmer residence on Madison Street. Uh, the Community Affairs Department and Commissioners are aware of that, and action is being taken as we speak. It, uh, it used to be occupied. When I was in Community Affairs, I had several actions that I took at that location. And, uh, there are several abandoned mobile homes, several abandoned boats. Uh, it's in the works. That's all I can say. So with that, sir, I will pass to my colleague to the left.
This week, uh, I have a meeting with Dynamark, the camera people, coming up after this Commissioners' Court. And we're looking at it. We're trying to get the cameras at the tax office back up and running, you know, supporting the statute. And I don't know whether we're going to look at that many cameras, because we're going to take, take a good look at the plan and see what's going on there. Uh, Blanconia, I haven't had anything right now. I think Grace is still at. Mrs. Grace still left?
She'll be back in a second.
Okay. Grace has been out, so I haven't been able to figure anything of that. Um, but BDA, we're still moving forward with that, uh, contract on Neo Industries. So that still hasn't been finalized, but it's, it's getting close to very good. So with that being said, I'll pass on to Commissioner Hager.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, not a whole lot. Had a few calls there in Tynan. Uh, have a call with a muddy ditch, uh, lawnmower gets stuck, things like that. Contacted Ray. Ray has contacted the owner of the property. Uh, also contacted, well, we had to contact her by phone because, uh, Mrs. Minnis now has COVID. So we're not allowed to go by her house, and screaming across the yard doesn't work very well. Uh, so anyway, contacted her. She's aware of a small leak there at the corner. Of course, they also have one of the fire hydrants that they occasionally open up to flush the sand out. Uh, again, they're, they're having issues again with sand. Uh, not very, very badly, but it is an issue coming up. Um, working with all of that. Uh, other than that, it's just been that I have a final BAT meeting today. Um, and I think, uh, Matt, with, uh, Tech dot, uh, they're kind of aware of a project coming that you'll be very pleased with coming to, uh, to be built. So we'll just wait and see when it comes through. So just to let you know, that's it. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Commissioner, and thank you all for those, uh, comments. Um, I honestly, I don't really have anything to update. We've been pretty busy on the budget. Uh, like to extend my appreciation not only to April and her office, but to the department heads that we've had to go back and work with a little bit more. Uh, I'd also like to extend my appreciation to each one of y'all Commissioners for your creativity and, and, uh, and effort in, uh, with respect to trying to craft a budget that, uh, that we can afford, that answers the needs that we have, and maybe build some few ones as well. So thank you, everybody, for that. I think it's going along swimmingly. Um, there's still a little bit of razzle-dazzle that I know Mrs. Cantu is going to bring to it, and I just look forward to seeing what magic she can come up with. Uh, so thank y'all, uh, for all of your efforts. Uh, that concludes the Agenda Item Number Five. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Six. Is there anybody who'd like to make a public comment? Okay, moving on. Agenda Item Number Seven. The following items are of an administrative nature. Commissioners' Court has been furnished documentation on each item, and all such items may be acted upon by one vote without being discussed separately unless requested by a Commissioner or County Judge. Oh, a motion? Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? Anything particular that we need to make note of, Mrs. Cantu?
No, not unless there's any questions, sir.
No questions. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen. Moving on. Discuss and consider action on the following items. Agenda Item Number Eight. Approve updated standard alarm sales monitoring service contract between Dynamark Security Centers in B County for cameras at the Expo Center.
Move to approve. I see the purchase price amount is $6,441 and the service agreement is $114 a month.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Got a motion and a second to approve. Thank you both. Any further discussion, questions, concerns? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen. Agenda Item Number Nine. Approve standard alarm sales monitoring service contract between Dynamark Security Centers in B County for cameras at the Community Affairs Building.
Move to approve. I notice the purchase price is $4,773.50 and the service agreement is $76 a month.
Thank you, Commissioner. I have a motion and a second, but I got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen. Agenda Item Number Ten. Approve and accept check donation for the mineral bus stop installation. Commissioner Wood, this is your item. You have the floor, sir.
Yes, this is something that, uh, our Rodden Bridge Administrator and the, uh, Transportation Director, Pawnee, and I have been working on for quite some time. When Tatiana Stein was here with Orsted, we floated a idea with her to create a bus stop for the, uh, students and parents of Pawnee to get under, get out of the weather, rain, sun, whatever, in mineral, on county property. And I have to appreciate the work that, uh, uh, our Rodden Bridge Administrator has done. I kind of stepped out of the picture. He's been working on it for several months. They've changed, uh, folks at Orsted. We figured, well, it's not going to happen. It's not going to happen. Well, they have a new person named Francisco Salazar, who has gotten with our Rodden Bridge Administrator. The way we crafted this judge originally was that we wanted him to do everything. Not put any work on Rodden Bridge. Go out, they went out and got the bids. They would do the contractor work. He would be there to help supervise it. That is great. And it was working exactly like that until last week. And their accounting division got involved and said, "You can't do it that way because if you do, it's no longer a donation. It's a work order." So they said, "County, we're going to issue you the check and you do it." Well, that was working real good until I talked to the auditor. The auditor said, "Commissioner, we're under the same guidelines. We have to, if it's over $50,000, we have to bid it out and get proposals." I called Mr. Salazar and I said, "Here's," and, and we kind of laughed, you know. "The auditors are keeping us straight. Thank you." And, and he said, "Look, it's not a problem." I said, "Well, look, why don't we go ahead and continue with this? Send us the check. We will escrow it. The, the auditor has a secret account, secret squirrel account. She can keep that in."
A liability line item.
Liability line, she calls it. I call it a secret squirrel account.
In the spreadsheet.
Anyway, we, we, we get the check in, we'll put it in that liability account, and we'll go out for proposals. And he said, "Well, here's the only problem. It can't exceed $78,290. Sir, it won't." He said, "We can't," he said, "I can't commit to half of that." I said, "No, sir." $78, uh, $290. He said, "And you can use the money for anything at that bus stop." Now, I'm thinking tables, whatever, you know, we need to put under there. So Judge, what I'm going to make a motion to do is, is, uh, accept the check, let the auditor put it in that liability account, and then get with Rodden Bridge and Grace and see how we want to put the proposals together. It's going to be in Mueller Building. I think it's twenty-six by sixty, ten foot tall, and, uh, we'll decide on the color and all this. And there's quite a bit of site work, so it's not going to happen overnight, but I think the important thing is to accept the check. If it all falls through, we can always return the check. So my motion is accept the check, and, uh, once we get the check in, to put the proposals together, go out for bids, do it all properly, and see how it goes.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Uh, yes.
I have discussion. Um, now, so for the, uh, for the bid, um, the Auditor's Office helped put it together, but we do need a point of contact for the project that's going to provide us with the specs. So we don't, we don't do any of that. Grace, uh, it does our grant, so she will not do this. It will be Veronica and Christina in my office that will help out with that.
We can get the specs together once we, I, I think it's important to get the check in the bank, and then we can work on the specs as we go along. But yes, I'll get with Rodden Bridge, and we can, we can work up specs because he'll have to be our, probably our inspector on site as this thing goes along. Do you feel that's the way to go?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so just make sure, you know, we, you get all those, that spreadsheet to the ladies and they can.
Right, and I asked Mr. Salazar to, to let, and it was some construction company here in B County that's going to build it, turnkey it, to let them know, "Don't do anything." So what we can do is get with them and say, "Okay, what specs were you using to put this together?" And then, right, we'll go from there.
It's, uh, M V.
Yeah.
Is there any MOU that has to be created? That's something, they don't work for us.
No.
Then they go to work on, on B County property.
No, no, no.
No, this money is ours.
This is a bid. We have to go out for a bid. So if this, so if this vendor helped the, uh, helped Orsted put this together, we, they can be on our vendor list for us to send them the package.
Yes.
There's no guarantee of who's going to get it at the end. Uh, we, we just.
I was talking about another step, that's that, when they start to work on the property.
It's county money, county bid, everything's county because of the way she said that.
Well, I mean, as far as the property, I'm not, I'm not sure.
Is there any liability when somebody comes on, or is that including the bid or bond?
They should be bonded.
They should be bonded. Okay, that is my question.
And that'll be in the spec sheet. That will be in, in the.
Yeah, it has to be bonded. Yeah, I was just worried about the liability when somebody else comes on, or are they bonded?
No, there's still a couple of projects at this point. It will be, so.
And that, that's all worked into the instructions and, and what the responsibility of the vendor is into the, into the package.
And, and, and it'll all come back to the court.
Okay, and this building alone will be added into the insurance coverage and damages?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it'll be a county bill.
Yeah, it's all, it's all county billed.
Yes.
County property.
And then hopefully we can have money enough to put, if they want, a sign saying this was donated by Orsted, that sort of thing. We'll cross that bridge when we get to it. I'm sorry.
No, no, you're good. Any other discussion? We're not in any rush. All right, no further discussion. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception. Agenda Item Number Eleven. Approve revised procurement proposal for electric power supply and notice of intent to begin a concrete, a competitive procurement process beginning January one, 2023, with Public Power Pool. Commissioner Wood, this is your agenda item. I'll give you the floor to walk us through the, uh, contract details.
Yes, basically, uh, our power provider is P three, we call it, Public Power Pool, and we've been with them, I don't know how many years, way before I even got on the court. And they've done us a great job. They saved us hundreds of thousands of dollars over the years. They go out and get natural gas contracts, and they bid it out, and they produce electricity, and we're the benefactor. Okay, they're getting ready to go out for, for bids, and what the industry has done, as you all know, natural gas prices are, are higher, and they're alerting us that, "Hey, this is going to be higher than it has been in the past because prices are higher." But they're in the process of going out for procurement or letting us know. Uh, it's a thirty day member notice period under their bylaws, and if we decide, "Ah, we don't want to fool them anymore. We can go out on our own and get our own electricity." My recommendation, my motion to the court is stay with P three. Uh, it's a nonprofit company. Uh, I think they've done us proud, and, and frankly, if I'm wrong, matter of fact, we've been able to work with them very easy, and things have worked out good. They helped save us some money during that year of time. And my motion is to approve this and let them continue and continue with them as our contract.
Now, um, on your motion, just real quick, what they're giving us notice on is a thirty day period in their contract where they can say, "Hey, look, because of market considerations, we're going to have to raise these potential ceiling rates that we can buy electricity at, which exceeds what we've previously and all the other members have previously agreed to as a ceiling on the kilowatt hour." So really, we're just, we're, we're, your motion is to not withdraw from the membership.
That is correct. That is, that is the motion.
Yeah, we're just, we're continuing on. We're not going to take action on this notice.
That is correct. I, I misspoke. I, I appreciate your clarity.
Okay, thank you, sir.
We're just going to continue with our contract.
Right, we'll come back to it when they do give us a set. Yeah, u- ultimately, they're, what they're going to do is they're going to renegotiate, but in order for them to renegotiate within the terms of their contract with us and all the other, uh, pool members, they've got to increase the highest rate that they can, because if you look at, I don't know what page it is, uh, forty-nine in the packet, the potential cost increase is going to be, uh, it looks like it could be as much as, it's not going to be doubled, but they want to have a, a, a ceiling that doubles what our current rate is. If our current rate, our current rate, this, this document says, is three point seven two cents per kilowatt hour. And for the three year, uh, commitment, they're want to have a ceiling rate at six point nine two cents. And the longer term that we, that, that they work with, the lower that, that rate will go down. But, uh, it's just like everybody else in the state of Texas. You know, our electrical, uh, costs are, are going way up, so. Otherwise, with that clarification, that's.
No, I, I really appreciate that.
I have a motion. Yeah, thank you, Commissioner.
Hey, I guess we can extension courts and hook them up in North B County.
Can we, can we run those extension courts across the county line to Karnes and Liveo?
We can do anything we want.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen. Agenda Item Number Twelve. Approve order of election for the November eighth, 2022, general election to elect county officers. That is, uh, an agenda item from Mrs. Warnix. Uh, the proposed, uh, uh, order of election material is included in the packet. Uh, Mrs. Warnix, this is largely, uh, housekeeping at this point in time.
The doctor orders the federal state office that we get order of county.
You have the proposed, uh, order of election. You've had an opportunity to review it. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? As always, Mrs. Warnix, thank you for everything you in your office do for the voters of the county.
That's what I noticed, too.
All JPs are running, all four JPs are running at the same time?
Did I put all four?
Just ran me through one, two, three, and four. I thought it was, I thought they were staggered.
They are. All right.
Do we need to amend the?
I'll have to amend the red line just in a minute.
Okay, so do we need to approve this one, or do we need to amend it here?
Let's get rid of that deadline, and then with correction, third with correction.
Okay, which two precincts are running?
One and three.
Yeah, because all four of them are listed.
So the motion, uh,
That's what I thought.
The Commissioner, DeWitt, your motion to approve to be correct would be with the correction that under justice, or next to justices in these precincts, numbers two and four would be removed. So it's a one and three, not one, two, three.
It's one and three.
One and three would be, would be, yes, that's right.
I'll amend my second.
Okay, I have an amended motion and amended second. Thank you for that clarification. Good catch, Commissioner. But is any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen. And I'm sorry, I didn't catch that, uh, Mrs. Warnix.
I'm sorry, I didn't either.
Uh, Agenda Item Number Thirteen. Approve order of appointment for elections, election judges, central compensation judges, and early ballot board for the 2022, 2023 one-year terms. Once again, this is a agenda item from Mrs. Warnix, uh, just to get out there in front of what I, I'm sure all my fellow Commissioners want to, to say as well. I'll get, I'll say it first, uh, before I turn the, the floor over. I'd like to thank all of the volunteers, uh, that are in our community that are willing to serve as judges. Uh, this is a, uh, an incredibly important part of, uh, our system of government. Uh, and I know that Mrs. Warnix and, and her office will always be interested in hearing from other interested members in the community who would like to, uh, to participate and, uh, and be part of the team that actually, uh, executes the elections, uh, in our county, both on the local, state, and national level. So thank you all for, for your willingness, uh, to serve in this regard. Ditto's all around.
Couldn't, couldn't have said it better, sir. You did words right out of my mouth.
Thank you, yeah. That was intentional.
Yes, yes.
All right, and so, uh, I didn't entertain a motion to approve the order of appointment.
I move.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception. Move, uh, moving on. Agenda Item Number Fourteen. Approve Net Data Quote for B County Server Options. Uh, do we have Mr. Oliver, our IT Director? Mr. Oliver, how are you this morning, sir?
Good. How are you guys?
Doing wonderful. Thank you. Um, I, I believe, uh, this is one of those things that we, we need to do, but, um, can you just, in general, just overview, explain what, what we're doing here?
There, there's two options that they sent us. Basically, what happened is December, our Net Data Server becomes end of life. IBM will no longer offer, uh, maintenance support for it. Uh, we, we have a maintenance hardware, software maintenance agreement that we pay for every year to keep it updated, and it breaks like they said. Um, they're no longer supporting it. We, we bought this, I believe, this particular server. I think it was back in either 2012 or 2013. Um, it's about nine years old, uh, and they're just, uh, saying that we can continue to use it as long as it, it, it functions, but if it, if it fails, it's our responsibility to have it fixed. Net Data will still support their software, uh, the Net Data software, but they, they will no longer be able to support the hardware or IBM software accordingly as a partner with IBM. So, um, this is the quote that they gave us. Uh, since then, they've also opened up a secure data center that they have now where they have hosted options for their system, uh, which is the first quote that you see. Uh, there's, there's no, with this, it's just an annual, uh, service fee that we normally pay. Um, there's no more hardware or things that we would have to manage or maintain. Uh, there is still a VPN between us and them that is currently that's one forty-two or one forty dash two C G S compliant, so we, we still have our compliance with them, uh, and it's still separated from our network, air gap from our network, you know, for issues like we dealt with a couple of years ago. Um, so that, that removes a lot of, uh, future headaches. Um, as far as, they, they, it also removes them having to come every six months, uh, to the county to manage, you know, to do their software upgrades, hardware maintenance, and things like that because it is in their system and their data center. Um, there is a, a one-time, uh, conversion. Well, there, there's going to be a conversion cost regardless because you're going, we're going to be going from an old platform to a new platform, so there's, you know, new versions of, of databases and things like that that they have to convert, um, to current. Uh, with that, uh, the hosted platform is $25,425 a year, uh, comparatively to the one-time cost of replacing the server and having our hardware here on site. Uh, if we were to do that, uh, we would be looking at a one-time cost of $52,630 for a brand-new server to take the place of this one.
Right now, um, we're paying annually $4,980 and eighty-seven cents. I'm not sure if there's a, a service.
So we go with this?
Charge also.
We go with the buyer. If we do a hosted platform, all they do is they convert our data into the new platform that's current, and then they manage and maintain everything from that point forward. And we just pay, you know, hosting and software licensing and things like that that we do now, uh, which should be, uh, $25,000 a year. Uh, on the last page, they have a five-year cost comparison for total cost of ownership over five years. Uh, the hosted platform, we're looking a little over $130,000 over five years. The software, uh, and hardware, uh, purchased over five years would cost roughly a hundred and forty-four thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars. Some of that can be trimmed down, uh, depending on some, uh, the, uh, options that they included. Uh, I don't believe the additional options that they included is needed, since, uh, about four years ago, we upgraded our current server to exclude the external imaging server for all of our documents, and it's now inclusive in the server for performance. So that would remove that. Uh, if you remove the twelve thousand and the, uh, the two thousand for the security options, uh, simply, I don't think we have that currently. It, it would roughly cost about the same amount of money over five years.
What is the N D H W maintenance? What is the, the twelve thousand dollar difference? I didn't see it in the.
That is, I believe, uh, on page three of four, uh, that is going to be the image storage server.
Thought we could do away with that.
I believe. We, we don't currently, we, we got away from that, um, option about four years ago, uh, just because of the performance when we were, uh, digitally scanning all of our documents into R V I.
Because we pay for R V I separately? What, I mean, well, we do pay for R V I separately. How does that work into this?
It's still included in, that, that's part of our system. Uh, that's not the hardware. Uh, this is just a separate imaging server to store those images on, uh, which is, we had that migrated into the server directly, so it's direct access instead of external access.
But that, and I, I, I don't mean to belabor the point, I just wanna make sure we're looking, 'cause if we remove the security option on that, I'm, I'm looking at the five-year cost comparison. If we remove the security option, that's fifteen thousand eight hundred dollars. That brings the total five-year cost down to one twenty-nine, uh, about a hundred and twenty-nine thousand. And I still don't, like, N D H W maintenance at twelve thousand dollars a year, that doesn't total up to either the, either of the options. And I'm just concerned what it is, 'cause that's sixty grand over five years. If you drop sixty grand off of a hundred and twenty-nine, you're down to, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know either. I mean, 'cause I, in comparing, yeah, in comparing what we're paying now, this is not anywhere near. I mean, we're, we're paying forty-nine hundred dollars annually, forty-nine eighty. So how is this, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure either. I don't.
The, the upfront costs are, are, I think, are, you know, uh, obviously higher on the on-premises option. Um, but I don't, I'm not sure I understand the, their, the pitch on the annual.
Question. When, when does this contract expire? Or when does this have to be done?
December thirty-first.
Can we get Net Data in here and do some?
I can request some.
Explaining to us, we, we have some questions, I think, and I certainly can't answer this. Wave up, my paper ready. I'll agree to that.
Well, my concern is the budget and us putting in the amount that we need.
Right.
We, we file our proposed on Friday with the county clerk, and I know we're not top team yet, but, uh, still, I, I don't know how long the process has been.
What have we got in there now?
None. We have what we normally spend.
Just the normal.
Four thousand nine hundred and eighty.
Yeah. And, uh, I, and this, and that four thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars comes out of the IT department. That comes out of their online services, um, line item, which I, which I believe we took that one up to seventy, seventy-eight thousand, which was for the defender of, uh, the defender increase. Is that correct, Mr. Oliver?
That, that was our, uh, Windows licensing, our anti-threat protection, and yes.
Defender A T P, just the whole package.
The whole, the whole package, yes, sir.
So we increased, uh, that lineup for, for that reason? So that's the line item we'd have to increase for whatever this is.
And I, I've been requesting this, this up, this quote, uh, long before budget, and they just got it to me a couple of weeks ago.
Well, let me ask, follow up on a question. Could we get them on speakerphone today while we're here and talk to them? Because I know the auditor needs that amount.
Yes, Mo said it'd be no problem if we need to give them a call.
Judge, that might be an option, if we could do it. That way we can finalize this today.
Yeah, absolutely. Might as well. We have the phone handy. Luckily, we have IT here.
I confirm, too. And that way we could get those questions answered and, and go from there, 'cause you, you need enough, you need an amount.
I, I don't know what, I don't, I'm not sure. Go through all, all of these different things. Is this all new? Um, because it just, nothing is.
The microbe does.
There's one right here. I have one there. They might be dead.
What's the, what's the life, uh, the shelf life on, uh, this, this IBM Power Nine core server before activation? When, when, when would, if we, if we choose, uh, we'll purchase the equipment and do it ourselves option, when are we gonna have to do this again? Five years? How old is our current server?
About nine years old.
Nine years.
Almost, yeah.
I would say, I mean, in a, in a perfect world, the, the annual option where the hosted option would be better. It's just that annual cost from a, really being pressured on our IT department as far as maintenance and upgrade of this thing. How much time do y'all have to work on this server currently?
We don't. Our, our software and hardware maintenance agreement is completely handled by Net Data. Uh, we, we host it here in the county, and they manage to maintain the whole system.
Okay.
Every six months, they come down and they do hardware maintenance as far as, uh, anything that needs to be fixed or changed, upgraded, uh, software update. They, they also, you know, clean the system.
Are they, is, does one of these packages have, or does the, uh, on, on-premise option have that included in the bid?
Yes, they, they take care of all of that. Oh, on-premise?
The same thing that we have today?
It should be part, it should be part of our hardware and software agreement.
Oh, really?
That, that shouldn't, that, that agreement shouldn't change.
Is it a separate agreement from this agreement?
Typically, it is. That, I think I come to the court once a year, April, you'll have to remind me of.
I think about seventeen hundred dollars a year, or I'm guessing four thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars.
No, this is the four thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars. That, that's the one that you come with, that they send you, that, that Timco, the lady.
Yes.
She sends you this, this off, uh-huh, Lori, um, the IBM annually, but that's what we pay, the forty-nine eighty.
Okay.
So that, that's what I'm trying to compare to this, and I'm not, I'm not, I don't know where it's at in here or what this is, 'cause all it says here is IBM hard drive software maintenance.
Yeah, see, I think that sixty-four hundred is a one-time fee, and I think that's separate from, I don't know what uplift means, but I'm guessing that that's separate than a maintenance contract that.
I mean, 'cause both of them have a core agreement.
Their, uh, Net Data is extending, uh, the warranty, the IBM warranty, one more year from what IBM offers of three years. Yet, since, since they're an IBM partner directly, they're able to offer an additional warranty on top of what they do. After that, then four years beyond has to be, uh, an annual, uh, extension. And we've been doing that, except this year, they only allow this six months, because, uh, it expires December thirty-first. But we pay for the full twelve months of our software with them maintenance. It's just the hardware, which is only guaranteed until December thirty-first.
Okay.
'Cause I, I'm just thinking, 'cause we have an IT support that we pay annually, that's twelve thousand. We have a R V I image that we pay annually, that's twelve thousand five hundred. Um, software maintenance that we pay annual, twenty-six thousand.
All with Net Data?
All with Net Data, and that's, yeah, that's not including, of course, the offices, their maintenance package. But those are just kind of, they seem like maybe that all goes in to be comparable to these, or is this additional?
I, I don't see how we're gonna be able to work this out with the telephone. Uh, at this point in time, I think it would make more sense, uh, Mrs. Teague, for you to put, uh, fifty-two thousand six hundred and thirty dollars and sixty-two cents in your budget as the purchase of a server option.
I know, I know. I, I mean, gosh. I just didn't, I didn't know these kind of numbers were gonna be coming down. When I saw this, I was like, I didn't know how they even shift through all of this. He is available.
Okay, great, great.
Please enter your personal identification number followed by the pound or hash key.
Hold on, hold on, I'm sorry.
Please enter your personal identification number followed by the pound. That pin is invalid for this conference. Please enter your personal identification number followed by the pound or hash key. After the tone, say your name and then press the pound key.
B County Commissioner's Court.
Thank you. Welcome. There is currently one other participant in the conference.
Hello, are you there? Hello, are you there?
I am here.
Uh, could you please state your name and your job title for the court?
Um, my name is Mel Massingale. I'm the IT Systems Architect for Net Data.
Hey, Mr. Massingale, how are you? My name's George Moore. I'm the B County Judge. I, I have Commissioner Haggar, Commissioner Fadys, Commissioner DeWitt, and Commissioner Lenny, uh, here with me, as well as, uh, Mr. Oliver. We're going through the, um, Net Data, uh, B County Server Options, uh, document that you prepared, uh, on July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two. We're trying to wrap our, wrap our, uh, uh, our thoughts around, uh, the two options and, um, how they relate to what we currently, uh, are paying versus what, uh, the proposals include, as well as a couple of the line items on the proposals. We're just not exactly sure what they, uh, what, what they, what the cost refers to. Uh, and, uh, so hopefully, we can just kind of work through with you some of these issues, and we can get clarity, uh, so that we can, uh, make an informed decision. So I really appreciate you, uh, just at the beginning, I really appreciate you making the time, uh, for us, uh, this morning. Thank you, sir. So.
No problem.
To jump in, uh, currently, as, as we understand it, and, and you can correct me, that's okay. You don't have to be nice about it. You can just say, Judge, you're wrong. Look, we'll, we'll be efficient with your time. Um, uh, as I understand it, we currently, uh, pay an annual service fee for this, uh, uh, for this server of four thousand nine, of four thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars and eighty-seven cents. Is, is that your understanding as well?
Uh, that may be true. I'm not, I'm not, uh, familiar with your contract specifically. So I'm not exactly sure what you got. That would normally be addressed by, like, a salesperson.
Okay. Well, then, let's try this. In the, uh, recommended solutions five-year cost comparison page, I think it's the fourth page of your proposal, um, on the, on, on the on-premises, uh, uh, table, you have a N D H W maintenance, uh, row. What is that?
That is your annual hardware maintenance, uh, or what we call hardware maintenance. Um, it's what facilitates, uh, our visits to your county twice a year, uh, maintains, um, any kind of work we do on your system. Um, you get, yeah. I have a document here that outlines a lot of it.
I'm not sure if that, the IT support, it's twel, we pay twelve thousand IT support, and, I mean, that could be that, it's twelve thousand dollars. I'm not, I'm just not sure how they're comparable to what our fees and neither, and, and he's not either, so.
Yeah, I don't, yeah.
I guess just to get this explained is what he can help us with right now.
Yeah, if we have so many different disparate contracts with, with Net Data, and what we're really trying to get at is to see apples to apples, what do we currently have? And what are we, what are we paying for the, the new options? Um, it sounds like there's probably not questions that you can answer, Mr. Massingale, that we need to tell them in the, uh, that fair.
So the, the hardware interest that you guys have right now, that, that twelve thousand dollars covers, that covers every time you guys call in to have, um, a reconfiguration of the system, or, uh, client, the client, sorry, excuse me, the client, uh, software installation by us or troubleshooting, uh, anything to do with the R V I client configuration troubleshooting, um, the Icon, uh, client troubleshooting, uh, printer session configuration, um, access to our IBM CE on-site, uh, here to assist with remote issues. Uh, and then we, uh, monitor your system to a degree. It covers the two yearly visits that we come out and perform upgrades, P T Fs, which are considered updates on your system. Um, you guys also have, let me, let's, let's, uh, you get a level two, which means you also have our business continuity services, uh, which provides access to a separate replacement server with equivalent resources with, that now onsite technicians help restore, uh, the Net Data server services back to, um, functionality, uh, during the declared disaster, as well as some other contractual things that are written in the contract.
What's the difference between that, Mr. Massingale, and the line item IBM hardware and software maintenance uplift at sixty-four hundred dollars for the first year, and then starting in year four, uh, sixty-five hundred, and then in year five, seventy-five hundred, which are just estimates?
Gotcha. Yeah, so the sixty-four hundred is, uh, when you purchase a server, it comes with your, uh, manufacturer, um, software and hardware maintenance. So the way that would be, uh, best explained would be, uh, software would be access to software updates from the manufacturer IBM, and hardware would be kind of your standard hardware warranty, uh, where if you have a piece of failed physical hardware on the server, uh, IBM would come out and replace it itself. Um, when they sell you the server, you get one year worth, and then the uplift that we have, uh, for sixty-four hundred dollars, uh, that pushes that, um, that maintenance out to years two and three. And then years four and five are estimate, 'cause at that time, there'll be a contractual renewal throughout IBM. They'll send you basically a bill for the latest, um, IBM hardware and software maintenance renewal, and then that cost is estimated to be approximately sixty-five. But it gets more expensive as time goes on, because of IBM trying to push older customers onto newer hardware.
Right. And, and what, what hardware does Net Data actually have? Like, what, with the Net Data hardware maintenance, what's, what's the Net Data hardware? Like what, with the NetData hardware maintenance, what's, what's the NetData hardware?
So the hardware maintenance is kind of a, it's kind of a bad explanation, or bad title for it. We call it hardware maintenance because we're the hardware department. It's more so IT maintenance. Uh, but yeah, basically, it just covers, it covers our, um, our actions, I guess, on your server and with your users that relive back to, like I say, printers, scanners, following a lot of the software, um, just general maintenance of the server on our part, because IBM does not do that. Um, so like I say, we do updates and, uh, upgrades for the server for, and basically kind of keep an eye on your server and give you recommendations. Craig and John have had us encounter that before, where we've given them kind of a statistics of what's going on and what they probably need, and then come to you guys and get information, so does that kind of delineate the two?
Would that include, if we, if we went up to the hosted option, would we have that benefit under the hosted option? Or would that be something that we'd have to separately?
No, that's all included in the hosted option. Now, it's not a one-to-one comparison, because not all the services translate to hosting, you know what I mean? Some of them translate to different types of services, but yes, it's the same concept. Through hosting, you get, you still continue to call in, we still support your users, we still install the software for, for free, you know, well, not free, but for the cost of the maintenance. That twelve thousand dollars that you see there is included in the hosting agreement.
And I believe that's what this is, that we already, that we do pay twelve thousand dollars for, it says IT support. I believe that should be the same, that, because that'll be a question, too, that we can ask.
And Judge, we, uh, after his explanation of what that is, we do that on a daily basis. We, we initiate calls in a day, um, daily for, for different issues, such as printers, like you said, printer issues. Um, whenever we add new computers and things like that, we have to add, you know, that printer session to those, you know, those users and things. So it has to be, you know, reset up, so they, they do assist a lot of that. We handle some, probably half of that, is we install the software locally. But sometimes the configuration isn't exactly this, so we do have to get them onboard. Also, the users have called in individually for things such as account walkouts and things that we can't handle, because we're not the administrators they are. So that, that is handled on a daily basis.
Any other questions currently, Mrs. Cantu?
Well, I, I just, you know, it's just, I, I mean, it's what we're paying in, in comparing. You know, like you said, apples to apples, I'm just not sure, and I, I don't think Mr. Massengill can really, like, we have a software maintenance, that's twenty-six thousand, is that for everybody? You know, is that just to pay for everybody? We have an RVI image separately also, twelve thousand five hundred, so I just want to see how.
Yeah, that's, that would be outside my expertise. I would be, I wouldn't want to comment on any of that, because I wouldn't want to give you any wrong information. But I could definitely get you in touch, uh, your representative, and he can address those questions more authoritatively.
Is that representative handy right now?
No, I'd have to see where they're at, they're on the, they're remote from me, so. But I can probably, I'd probably get him in contact with you today.
Mr. Massengill, I think what, we're, we're looking at the huge price increase, we're trying to figure out what we're getting is where we're coming from, sir.
Gotcha. Yeah, it'd probably be best to have you talk to, um, Bill Moser. He's our hosting representative, he manages all of our hosting agreements and stuff like that. And so he'd, he'd have the best understanding, best way to explain kind of apples to apples probably for you guys a little bit better than I could. I'm just, I'm just the tech.
No, I really appreciate your time this morning, Mr. Massengill. You provided some clarity for us, so you've actually done a lot of heavy lifting. It looks like the, the hard, the option two, the on-premises option, would require continuation of maintenance, this twelve thousand dollar annual maintenance agreement. But the, the hosting solution, somehow that twelve thousand dollar, uh, maintenance contract is included in the annual hosting fee, is that your understanding, Mr. Massengill?
That is correct.
Okay. Right, yeah, which I guess, um, thank you, are there any other questions for Mr. Massengill? Craig, any, Mr. Massengill, thank you so much, we'll go ahead and, and, and cut you loose. Thank you for being available, thank you for your efforts on our behalf.
No problem, if you guys have any other issues, please let me know.
Will do, take care, have a great day.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think, Madam Auditor, I'm more than happy to hear what you have to say on, on the matter, but I think what we probably need to do is just, I think, we need to create our own little chart of what we pay NetData and what it's for, to try to figure out which way this goes. But it would, it would seem to me, this is just me speaking with bad information, that, um, that the hosting solution might actually be a long-term, a better, uh, solution for us, uh, provided that we have consistent connectivity, I guess, to the internet, right? If we lose that connectivity, then we lose access to our data unless it's locally hosted. Uh, but that would just be from the, from the connection point where the AT&amp;T building to the rest of the world, uh, not from my office to the auditor's office, is that right? So our, our, the, the county's communications will all be connected to each other as it is currently. And then there's one node that leaves out of Craig's office and goes to AT&amp;T building, or this is right.
Spectrum.
Spectrum building, sorry, at least, then it's a Southwest Valley, it is the Baby Bell building, right? Uh, and then from there, it goes to the rest of the world, is that correct?
Well, we, we have an appliance in our building that creates a secure VPN between us and them.
Okay.
We have to have that already because of our credit card payment gateways and things like that, that goes through them. If we don't have that connection, we can't accept credit cards and stuff. But it's the same connection, so we still have to have that, and that's what keeps us also compliant with CEGIS as well.
And, and the only reason I belabor the point is just to make sure that everybody knows and understands, to the extent that we can understand any of this, uh, science fiction stuff that we live in, um, that anybody in the, in the community, that all of our, all of our internet, if it's, if it's LAN-based, is going through the same exact nodes, so if the, if, if there's a breakdown there, it's a breakdown county-wide, unless we have satellite internet, is that right? If you have time.
Well, redundancy, if we have, we have a redundant link, then, yes.
So, so the issue of not being able to access our remote hosted data could occur in the event of a winter storm, but if, or a hurricane, but it's not going to be a Tuesday at two P M, more likely than not, unless there's some incredibly dramatic.
And even with satellite during those events, it, it could be interrupted as well.
Right, um, so the security of having it, I'm sorry, the security of having it onsite is maybe not as great a concern as it was ten, fifteen, twenty years ago when all internet connectivity was a little less. Is that, am I saying this right, or am I completely out of the field? Because this is forming a basis for my.
Yeah, I mean, it's similar to the other slide, what did you say, nine years?
Oh, it's dumb.
It is passive life, we, we just push it to the end where IBM says no more.
But what's foggy is, what we pay total now, and I know you have a lot of different, uh, number lines, lines, whatever, what, what do we pay now, and what do we propose to pay?
Exactly, that, that's what, that's what we need, somebody to help us connect those numbers. And then know what's going to be above and beyond those numbers that we have to additionally budget for. That, that's the concern, is what it's going to go over what we're already paying, or if, if it's not. I mean, initially, it will be, of course, we have to purchase a new.
Right.
Yeah, and it's over the five years, right?
Because at the end of the day, the choice is, do we buy the new server, or do we go with the hosting solution? We have to, we have to.
But we're unclarified whether we're.
We're on the top, we're on the top branch.
Well, from a budgetary standpoint, if we're not sure today, then the only default provision that I would feel comfortable in is plugging in seventy-three thousand, not whatever the other number is, this is the actual.
Gentlemen, please, please understand, the December thirty-first deadline doesn't mean that it comes to a stop. It just means that if it does fail, we're responsible to pay to have it fixed, because IBM or NetData will no longer support the hardware platform it's on. That's all that means.
Mr. Oliver, right now, looking at these two proposals, which one do you favor, or do you favor?
I, I'm in agreements with the judge. I believe pushing it to the data center and having a hosted platform would be a much better solution. It has redundancy, you know, complete redundancy in their, in that arena, as far as power, internet, as far as their site, right? It doesn't give us redundancy here, because we would have to add that if you wanted to do so. But it would also put it into a secured building as well, and it would also be in a location outside of the coastal bend area, so if we do have another Harvey or tornado or something like that, I mean, tornadoes would be susceptible anywhere, I guess. But if we were to have another Harvey in, we wouldn't have to worry about flooding or, or anything like that, so.
With a hosted situation, we wouldn't need a server, then would we or not?
No, sir.
So we would delete that cost right off the bat by going with a hosted situation? And not have to replace it?
And, and my understanding, the twelve thousand that they were talking about, the, the maintenance and software and assistance and things that we pay on an annual basis, is inclusive into that cost? So you would really have to look at that minus, you know, subtract that from the twenty-five thousand, and that's what the hardware and software hosting would actually be, plus the twelve thousand that we use for their, their services.
That's what I'm thinking, and maybe even some of this software maintenance, or RVI image, maybe even a little bit from there could also go towards that. So that's what we'll, we'll have questions on. But I, I believe that that's to be the case, that that twelve thousand is added into that, with that forty-eight ninety.
And we get there also, if it's a hosted solution, they're also backing it up. So if something happens, they all, they still have the backup. How much time does your office been messing with backup?
About five minutes.
Okay.
In the morning, every day, one of the girls in the office grabs a backup, the next day, backup tape out of the safe, goes in there, it, it's already ejected, they grabbed that last night, put this one in there, it sets up, put it back in the casing, goes back in the safe. That's a, that's a Monday through Friday solution. With the option here in the hosted, that's every day, so.
Okay. Okay, so, um.
So it, so it could be, I mean, maybe a twelve thousand dollar addition?
Sounds better than the ditch we started.
I, that's what I'm, that's, I'm hoping is going to be the net bet.
The backup solutions you're talking about, Judge, those, those tapes are extremely expensive to replace. And we have two sets of five, so there's ten tapes that goes in there, and they, they are expensive when they do have to be replaced. That would be another thing that would be eliminated for that.
And it seems very analog.
It, it is a.
It's literally a.
It is a good option to have when things just die.
Right.
So, because it is external of the system. But their backup solutions are also separated from their servers as well. I mean, it's, it's a full data center solution, and it, or at least what I would expect. I have not been to their facility to inspect it visually, but, uh, knowing data centers from the past, I would expect that to be, you know.
Secured, yes. So maybe we can pencil in, maybe we can get away with penciling the twenty-eight thousand for twenty-five? Do we want to schedule a, another agenda this Thursday? Not available Friday, can we do Thursday?
Well, I think we have our tax rate on Friday, August fifteenth is, is on our schedule.
Oh, we have a bunch of meetings ready.
Uh-huh, we have the, the tax rate.
We do.
That's on our schedule. Okay. Well, I guess, maybe the fifteenth is when you have to put it in for Monday? I, because I just saw August fifteenth on my calendar.
What time would you all feel comfortable?
I'm not available Thursday, I'm out in the, in the doctor's room.
I'll be on Thursday, you're going to work?
Exactly.
Uh, Friday? Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I'm here Monday, I'm here Friday, too, but.
I'll be here Monday, Tuesday, I've got a judicial training.
Working.
I guess, necessary.
I don't have a choice. When they tell me I have to do this.
Yeah, anything difficult that needs to be handled, if we could schedule it from fifteen to sixteen, I appreciate that. Um, yeah, April, I think I'm okay with penciling into twenty-eight thousand right now, because if we, if we do need to go with the hosted, with the onsite solution, then we're going to have to make adjustments anyway, so rather than preemptively make those.
Here's.
Without, I mean, with that twelve thousand that's already in there?
Yeah.
Okay, I, I mean.
Because we can, because we'll have time to adjust it. It's going to throw the number off, we'll just have to be cognizant of that, and I'm sorry, Mr. Oliver.
There, there was one other thing to remember as well, is if we stay with a on-premise solution, every time we upgrade, we have to go through that migration process, which can cause downtime.
Okay.
Usually it's done overnight or on weekend, um, but to ensure the proper operation when the new system comes online, you know, there could be some hiccups here and there. If we go with the hosted solution, from that point forward, there, there shouldn't be that type of situation in the future. It would just be the one-time migration, and then they would handle all of that internally at their center.
Have we already posted Mondays? Can we add, this is an agenda, Mondays?
One, one other thing I was kind of curious that I wasn't sure about, uh, which probably would be the salesperson to clarify, since the tax office has migrated over to ATC, are we still paying, you know, for them to have the tax solutions?
They've, they've dropped, they, they've dropped that off of the maintenance contract. And so that's just, you know, one of the offers that dropped off, and so it, it tightens up the number a little bit, but we.
I was just looking at what you're saying, if that's possible, so.
Yeah, no, there, there will be, because it, that department has dropped off their maintenance contract.
Okay, so, um, I'd entertain a motion to table this until the August fifteenth meeting.
Don't move.
I've got a motion, I have a second.
Second.
A motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passed, without exception, thank you, gentlemen, thank you, Mr. Oliver.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Um, moving on, Agenda Item Number Fifteen, American Rescue Plan ARP Status and Projects. Commissioners DeWitt, Commissioner Lenny, what's that mean, if anything?
Do you have anything, sir?
I don't have anything.
We're, we're, uh.
I really don't.
We understand the check may be in the mail, we're waiting on the check, and we're talking about maybe September.
Oh, yeah, I'm not sure.
Yeah, we're, we're not sure, but everything else is, uh, the one thing that we were working on was the airship issues at the Coliseum, and I don't think we've gotten anything new on that, so Judge, we have nothing real questions on that.
Thank you, Commissioners. It's that time of year, it's late summer.
Yep.
Did you have something?
No, no, it doesn't pertain to that, so, no, don't mind.
If there's nothing else, we'll move on. Agenda Item Number Sixteen, Update, Discussion, and Possible Action Regarding B County COVID-19 Status, Preparedness, and Contingency Planning. Um, same update as, as always, be cognizant, be mindful, protect yourself and those that you love. Um, we have no executive session, items, moving on, Agenda Item Number Seventeen, Adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, we are adjourned, thank you all very much.
Hey, Commissioner Lenny. Hey, Commissioner Lenny.